I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the School Board of the West Bend Joint School District, number one. It is Thursday, February 6th, 4:30. More than 24 hours prior to this meeting, the notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building. They entered stores at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKB, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources who have requested notice of our meetings. Superintendent, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have one item, potential action item tonight, and that has to do with our superintendent's search process. With that, I will move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Agenda is approved. Thank you to all of our high school students who are here tonight. You've chosen a good meeting to come to because we only have one item to discuss, and hopefully it'll be fairly quick for you. So, thanks for coming tonight. Monday night, we talked about Superintendent Kirkogard's resignation, and of course, we want to move fairly quickly to find a wonderful replacement for him, although nobody will compare to him. The person will certainly have big shoes to fill, and so we want to start that process right away. That's the reason for our special board meeting tonight. So, I will, maybe Andy, if you want to come to the podium, because I'll probably call on you fairly soon here, I'll start out. We used Mac and Jake, a search firm, two years ago. We reached out to them in early to mid-January and heard from, heard a proposal from them. We also heard a proposal, I believe, from Rayan Associates. If that rings a bell?
January of, it was 20...
What did that event, 2018?
2018. Okay, I just want, just, because we're going to reference how long ago the...
Sure. So, we heard two proposals two years ago, and the board, we went with Mac and Jake. We used all five of their phases of their search, and we paid $9,500 for that. I remember at the time, the other firm that came in and gave us a presentation was significantly higher, and I say significantly because it was at least double, if not more. It was 20 to...
I thought it was a little over 20, actually.
A little over 20,000. So, that's why we went with Mac and Jake. We used, they assigned us two superintendents, Wisconsin superintendents, Melissa Thompson and Brian Haynes, and they ran us through the process, all four or five phases, and we ended up hiring Superintendent Kirkogard. So, I reached out to Mac and Jake this week, asked them to put together a proposal. I told them that we were probably interested in an abbreviated version of what they did for us two years ago. So, Phase 1 that they did two years ago was several weeks and meetings of stakeholder input, where they met with our staff, they met with our students, they met with community leaders, had focus group sessions, where they compiled kind of a profile on what our community is looking for, and of course, they did that same discussion with board members at the time, and we formed the profile of what we want in our next superintendent. I still have all that information from two years ago. I personally don't think that profile has changed, and I didn't bring all the information with me tonight, but that is something I can certainly provide to everybody in the near future, and I think we definitely should revisit the profile. However, I don't think we need to start from scratch on that profile.
Agreed.
Just my opinion on that.
I agree. It would be a waste of taxpayer money to reinvest in something that we so recently completed.
So, when I talked to Tom Jacobson on the phone this week, I told him, what if we cut out Phase 1, do just a little bit at the tail end of Phase 2, all of Phase 3, all of Phase 4, and then maybe Phase 5? So, I'll kind of take you through what those phases are. Phases 3 and 4 are really the posting and promotion of the job. And so, they come with a three or four-page brochure on the West Bend School District, on what our community has to offer, the size of our district, the size of our budget, and then, of course, links to the application, links to contact Melissa Thompson and Brian Haynes, and that is then distributed to their contacts and used to promote the job. And then, from there, once applicants apply, then Mac and Jake go through all the applicants, and depending on the number of applicants, they could narrow that down for us. Last time, there were 45-ish applicants, and they narrowed it down to a top 20 and presented those top 20 applicants to the board. We narrowed it down to a top 10, or top 8. We had our first round of interviews, and then narrowed that down to a top 3, and did finalist interviews on those 3. And Mac and Jake is with us the whole, throughout that whole process of contacting the applicants and scheduling interviews, working with the board to schedule the interviews, and how that whole process, you know, is seen through. Phase 5, then, is when you select your superintendent, they will work with the board to establish goals for the superintendent, and what else? Establish goals and really just ensure that the superintendent's going to work well with the board. We did a little bit of Phase 5 last year, and then Melissa Thompson would check in with Superintendent Kirkogard. She would check in with me every two, three months, just to see how things were going, and if we needed to bring her back for any follow-up sessions with the board and the superintendent. So, we used a little bit of Phase 5 last time. I wouldn't say we used all of Phase 5. So, what they put together for us, in what you have in front of you, is a proposal for basically Phases 3 and 4 and a little bit of 2, which is the advertising of the vacancy, the recruitment of the applicant screening, and then the transition, and the price they put on it is $5,900, which is on top of the last page. Superintendent Kirkogard talked about the AASA, the American Association of, help me out, American Association of School Administrators, and why don't you tell me just quickly what that is?
So, most superintendents are members of the AASA, and so, they do have a website that every listing or anyone that you want to pay for is on that AASA. So, when I get the updates, it'll show me that Germantown is listed. It showed me that Sheboygan Falls is listed. It shows, and that's across the nation. And so, I don't need, you have to decide what you do and don't want, but that would be the one advertisement that hits most people, not only out of state, but in-state as well, because almost every superintendent in Wisconsin is going to be a member of AASA, and so, they will see that, as well as anybody who's, maybe they're from Wisconsin originally, and they now live in Illinois, and they want to come back to Wisconsin, or whatever the case might be. And so, I don't know what the cost is, but that is the Organization for School Administrators, and they do have a website that lists all of the positions available.
That was one that Superintendent Kirkogard told me about. I mentioned it to Tom Jacobson, and he said, absolutely, you'll want to advertise with AASA. If he had to pick just one, that would be the one. He did not put the cost of that in here. If I had to guess, it'd be somewhere between 500 and 800 bucks to advertise with the AASA, and that's something we can ask Mac and Jake if we decide to go with Mac and Jake, or anybody else. So, that's their proposal. Now, did you reach out to WASB, or did you reach out to WASB?
I did speak to WASDA, so the district administrators in the state, not the AASA. I did not speak to WASB as of yet. They do have a search firm, and I did speak to somebody else about it. I think they've, they do have that ability to provide the service. I think they only handle so many at some point in time, so it was my understanding that they might be fairly well maxed out at this point in time. But, as you indicated, we did receive a proposal from Mac and Jake, and I've reviewed the document, I've reviewed the proposed contract. I, I wouldn't have anything to change as is presented at this point in time. It's pretty, the pricing of it is very aggressive.
And then, the one you emailed me about, was a gentleman going to Phoenix?
Yeah, so...
I wasn't familiar with that firm. Why don't you just quickly?
So, former CISA 5 administrator, his name is Don Stevens. He does the same thing. So, former WASDA, I think there's several individuals across the state, so Miles Turner's another name, this is Don, Don Stevens. They do this as well, and they perform a few of them per year. Don indicated that he would have capacity at this point in time to be able to assist the district, and it is, I would ask him if you guys would like to proceed on some pricing. Again, based on my experiences in having been involved in such a process, the $5,900 proposed by Mac and Jake, that I don't know who would be able to touch that. I could proceed with it, though, if you'd like. Very quality individual.
That being put aside, I do think that Mac and Jake has a good handle on our district, and I, you know, as a board member and going through that process, I thought they did a nice job. There was really nothing that, you know, when we were done with the process, that we were upset by or disappointed in. I do think that the price is very competitive, quite honestly, looking at the price for, when you look at, you know, executive search firms, that's a good-looking price, quite honestly. A real good-looking price. So, you know, I for one would be in favor of using Mac and Jake again and proceeding. Are we guaranteed to have Melissa again and Brian?
We are guaranteed to have Brian for sure. Brian is from the Schwab and Onn area, and when we had him two years ago, he was finishing out his last year as superintendent. He is now retired, and he is available. Melissa Thompson passed a referendum, and she's building a new building in her district, and she's coaching her kids' basketball and volleyball teams, so she stepped back a little bit from doing searches. However, she understands and has a lot of familiarity with West Bend, and she kind of said she might be able to come and help. That's not a guarantee, but being that we're 40 minutes from her house and not four hours, Tom Jacobson was going to reach out to her to see if she wanted to be involved if we use Mac and Jake. So, Brian for sure, maybe Melissa. And the gentleman you're talking about, Andy, was going to Arizona for a funeral and said he could put together a proposal for us next week. I have a feeling, the fact that he's never worked with us before, he would want to come in and present to us, tell us everything he has to offer, which I'm sure would be fine. But I'm with Nancy, where Mac and Jake really, we just used them two years ago, and they understand West Bend, and I think know what we'd be looking for, and so that's why, you can kind of tell by the way I'm talking, I'm leaning pretty heavy towards Mac and Jake.
Andy, with this other individual, so it sounds like he's more of a sole proprietor, runs his own consultancy for placement of individuals.
Yep. Couple retired superintendents that they do this, just, that's their retirement, that's what they wanted to do, so, yeah.
And I'm thinking along the lines of Nancy, that, you know, the price on this is very competitive compared to executive searches in the business world, and even if we were looking at somebody like Don at half this price, do they have the methodology of Mac and Jake? Do they have the national reach, the advertising, Hootsba, and so forth? I think all things considered, given the recent experience, it's probably just as efficient to go with what we know, as opposed to something that might be a dollar or two cheaper, but it's a brand-new start.
I thought the firm was very, very thorough when they helped us the first time, and in fact, I remember the time they dedicated to all the listening sessions with various groups, and I thought that was very, very valuable and clearly work that we can use again. I'm in favor of this. I also think that if we wouldn't have had that prior experience, one of the first things that we'd have done is we'd go to other districts and say, can you give us a referral? Well, we have the best referral here, which is ourselves. I mean, we've had experience with them, and I think the price is very, very attractive. I'd have no hesitation going with the proposal.
I gave a referral to Sheboygan Falls last fall. Their superintendent is retiring, and she called me to ask me what I thought about Mac and Jake, because they were going, knew they'd be going through this process, and they did end up using Mac and Jake, and their, I think their application closes this week, and so, I haven't called her back to ask her what she's thought of their process, but I know I was the one who gave her a very solid referral just six months ago, so.
Now, here are my thoughts. That Mac and Jake provided many qualified candidates, as you said before, so they have a track record. I was part of, before on the board, part of one of their listening sessions, that many community members were involved, from parents to community leaders, business leaders, and even the public leaders, and I believe some even students they talked to at the high school as well at the time. So, definitely did a good job. They brought us Superintendent Kirkogard, and I just want to say, before I final comment, is Superintendent Kirkogard did a great job. We wish he would have stayed longer, but we wish him the best. In two years, he was able to accomplish a lot. There are a lot of good quality administrators here. Superintendent made some good hires externally, so we have actually a pool of candidates, and maybe for the high school students here. Hopefully, some of our internal candidates will apply, as well as maybe doing an external search. So, maybe those listening, those high school students, your favorite administrator or principal, tell them about the job. No, they know about it, but I'm just being facetious. But, it is a good position, and we encourage, I'm in favor of Mac and Jake finding external candidates, so we get the best pool possible, and the best person for the job is going to rise to the top. So, I'm in favor of the proposal, as you.
Aaron, any thoughts?
Well, you guys have experience with Mac and Jake, so I'm kind of looking to you guys to provide that, but, I mean, looking at what they're providing and the price for that, I think it's, yeah, it seems like a really good, good proposal.
Superintendent, maybe you remember, but when we advertised this job, we also advertised a salary range, and I can't remember if it was 150 to 175, or 160 to 175. I do know the top end, I believe, was 175. Do you remember what the bottom end was?
I do not. I want to say 160 to 175, but I don't know that for sure. But I do know it was to 175. That was the top end of the listing, and, but I don't know what the bottom was. And so, you'll have to make some decisions. You really have to look at the position as, you know, the size of the school, the community, and I think you'd be hard-pressed to list it below 160 to 175. I'm not saying that it has to be more than 175. If you find the right person, you have some flexibility to do that, but I don't know if you want to make it much less than 160 as the introductory-type level, but that's certainly your call.
Yep. Reason I bring that up is, two years ago, Mac and Jake was pretty adamant that we advertise a range, so that potential candidates know that we are looking for someone to fill a very important role in a pretty good-sized district, and we're willing to pay for what you get, sort of thing. I think, I'm still in favor of doing that. I don't think 160 to 175 is out of line, even if someone is making 180 somewhere else, they would still potentially look at this and think, you know, I'm still interested because I can see that they're willing to pay for experience or pay for what you get, sort of thing. So, I want the rest of the board's thoughts on that, because if we go with Mac and Jake tonight, we could have this job posted as early as tomorrow, and, you know, I think if we decide to post a salary range, let's talk about it tonight, so.
I'm comfortable with the 160 to 175 range. It's competitive with the other area superintendents that we, our public information, so, and also, I'd like to mention that I don't think our needs have changed. Don came in and has done everything we hoped he would do, and I don't think that we need to pay for another set of listening sessions and strategy sessions, because we're looking for the same thing. Our shopping list hasn't changed, so I think it's okay to not complete that phase that we did last time.
I think it's a good idea to publish the range. I think that that really does help applicants who would be well-suited to actually apply. They don't have to worry about the mystery of, well, what's the salary going to be? I think it's transparent, and I'm fine with the range of 160 to 175.
Andy, being the guy with all the numbers in your head, have you looked geographically around us and districts of similar size in the state? Are we reasonable with those numbers?
Yeah. So, I looked at, the DPI website has, if you literally Google on the DPI website Administrative Salaries, you can pull up current information as of 2018, 19 school year. So, it's a year old, and we're looking at next year, but I did a range of school district size, people with experience, new people, surrounding area, and on average, of about 45 districts that I kind of pulled out as comparisons and whatnot, the average salary, and granted, many of these people had superintendent's experience, but the average as of the last school year is 175.9, 175.5. So, I think, again, with some experience, that would justify the high end of our range, but that's a little bit old, because we're two years out from that, and if you take a look at the CPI, a couple percent per year, but I think it's within reason, yeah.
Thank you.
Here are my thoughts of it. Not that we would want to spend more than we have to, but why don't you, my suggestion would be, why don't you even go down on the lower ends, 160, but go up on the high end, 180? If we do have to be competitive and find a candidate that we have to be competitive with that has the experience, that's, gives just some room.
I would, I would agree with the 180, going up to the 180. I would wonder if at the lower end, we wouldn't go down to the 150. I mean, that's a huge gap, I understand, but, you know, we could have someone potentially who's never been a superintendent, you know, and then that would obviously warrant, I mean, 160 sounds like a big jump for someone who's never been a superintendent, if we decide to, you know, if the top candidate is that person, and they're currently making 125, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty major jump up to 160. I realize that's a big gap, so maybe that's not, you know, does that look odd to people who are applying? I don't know, but I feel like 175, when I'm looking around on DPI, I mean, we got a neighbor who's making close to 190, as I look at, you know, and that's literally 20 minutes away, so, you know, I think that 175, we might limit ourselves if we have some superintendents who have been in the game for quite some time. So, I would be in favor of going to 180 on the high end, but I would question if we want to go a little bit lower on the lower end. I don't know. I don't know what the semantics of that looks like to someone applying. Maybe Don can share, I don't know.
Just, you have to remember that whether they're a first year or a fifth year, they have the same amount of, it's still the superintendent of West Bend School District, and so you're going to potentially limit some of those people who don't have experience, because 150 is really a low end for this particular job. And I know they don't have experience and they have the ability to get there. It's hard to move up from the district if you start here, because you typically save the same increases as everybody else. And so, you certainly can go 150. I think your comment of 180 makes sense, because you don't have to pay 180 if you don't have the experience, but it gives you the flexibility. I, you know, like I said, you can do a 150, 155, 160, and you always have that flexibility, but you might limit some potential applicants, because they think, well, they're just going to lowball me at 150, and for the West Bend School District, whether you have experience or not, it's more than a $150,000 job. My opinion.
And maybe for the students. If I'm right, we are the 21st-largest school district out of 422 in the state?
Right around there, yep.
So, we're a large...
We have the Milwaukee component. I know that there's other pockets. You look up kind of northwest of Eau Claire, or even Dane County, but we still have, I mean, that proximity to Milwaukee is, you pay a little bit of a premium because of that, and we are a larger district, so, yep.
Does this make any of these students want to aspire to become superintendents?
You have to have taught first legally to do that.
Yes, become a teacher first.
Did we verify that?
I think we do.
Any takers?
I'll weigh in and say that I'd be comfortable with 160 on the low end, 180 on the high end. That 10, I mean, part of me says, you know, not that it's a binding number, but obviously, if you're advertising 160, you can't come in below that, but there, that 10K delta to Don's point is pretty significant, and it's a big task, and it still leaves us room to come down from where we're at at the moment, if situations warrant that.
If I put on my human resources hat, as we go through this process, and as we start to review applicants and whatnot, we will start to determine who we're looking for, and candidates will start to surface and come out and whatnot. Even if we found that applicant that didn't have that superintendency experience, there are things that we can do, too, through an agreement and putting some language in there to get a little bit aggressive, maybe start low and get a little bit, so incentivize, I guess is a good way to put it. So, I mean, there are things that we can do in order to maintain that person, to keep them here, so, just food for thought.
Any other questions or discussion about just the process in general, the potential job posting, or any? The job posting itself is fairly basic across the state. You know, I don't know that there's language in the, in the posting itself that's specific to West Bend that I can remember. It'll be posted on WE CAN, which is the Wisconsin Education website, and then, of course, advertised through, through Mac and Jake, and probably the AASA. Once we get a price on that, we'll decide on that, so.
I'd be happy to call WASDA and AASA to secure pricing, to determine that.
What is typical for leaving the application open?
So, I was just going to ask, what are close dates?
Well, I want to say Sheboygan Falls was open for three to four weeks. Right now, it's February 6th, and I think March 6th is a Friday? Don's looking at his calendar. You know, I don't see why, if it gets posted tomorrow, you know, it would run through that week of March 6th, whether it closes on the 4th or the 6th, and then the following week, you're, you know, you're verifying references and employment and things, and of course, if we've only got 15 applicants, we might look at all 15. If we've got 60, then Mac and Jake helps us whittle that down to a top 15, or whatever the number is. Two years ago, Mac and Jake, there was a clear break on 40-something applicants. There was a clear break that these are our top 10, or 15, or whatever the number was. I mean, we, they, you know, there was, just as an example, a PE teacher from an elementary school applying for a superintendent in West Bend was not, Mac and Jake didn't even come to us with that type of an applicant, if you know what I mean. So, if there's that clear break after the jobs have been posted for four weeks, then that's when Mac and Jake helps us whittle that down, and then they come to us with the applicants, so.
So, when I look at the calendar, I think aggressive, but certainly adequate time, that you could close the week of March 6th, that Friday, have, look at applicants, or Mac and Jake look at the applicants the following week, set up interviews the 6th, the week of the 16th, and potentially, if you bring a second interview back, depends on how many you have, the 23rd, make, the week of the 23rd, make a decision, offer a contract, have a special board meeting the week of March 30th, with the idea that you would have a new superintendent in place before spring break. And so, you could wait until after spring break, and I think our next board meeting would be the 13th. If you, if everything went the way you would like it to go, I wouldn't wait until the 13th, because at that point in time, it gets to be a lot of positions that are being filled, and so, I'd try to see if you guys could have a special board meeting that week of March 30th, announce who you have, have a candidate in place, and go from there, and then you're done before spring break, as opposed to the week after spring break.
I think that'd be amazing if we could get that done.
But, you know, last time, it took a lot longer, but you, like you said, you spent three weeks getting listening sessions, and the profile, and all the different things, and so, even though it's not much earlier or later in the session, you eliminated three weeks off of the front end, and you're right into the applications, and so, it... and it doesn't, four weeks is more than adequate for somebody to make the decision and get the application process in place, and they don't need more than that. And if they have four weeks for that, then you've got a couple, two, three weeks to narrow it down, to do the interviewing, do a second interview, if you choose to do a second interview, and offer somebody a contract.
Any other questions? Yeah. I, uh, I'll make the motion. I move to approve the contract with Mac and Jake as our superintendent search firm, and move that the job posting be listed with a range of one sixty to one eighty. Hundred and sixty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. So, motion and a second? Nancy. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Any other comments for the good of the board here?
You know, just before you do that, um, just a real quick, I suggest that, that Andy be your contact, I mean, they, if somebody calls me, I'll certainly give them information, but if there's, you know, if, if Mac and Jake needs to have somebody to communicate with on a local basis, that Andy would be the person, that that is the contact person going forward.
One hundred percent agree.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to work with the board, as, I mean, we'll, we'll stay in touch, we'll, we'll do this in a very strategic, timely manner, so...
Great, thank you for that, Andy. Any other comments, questions? Thanks for that, Don. Motion to adjourn, second by Nancy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And we're adjourned.
Students, come on up, shortest meeting ever. Tell all your friends.